I would like to call this...
Hold on a minute.
Oh.
Okay.
I would like to call the special Avalon City Council meeting, call it to order. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation. Ollie, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with his full liberty, with liberty and justice for all.
And please stay standing. Mary Rose Coughlin, Avalon Clinic Manager, will lead us in the invocation.
As fuel is brought to the fire, so I propose to bring my strength, my ambition, my heart's desire, my joy and my sorrow to the fire of humankind. The fire that is called the love of man for man and the love of man for God. And so we pray that each of you will bring what you have to the fire of humankind so that we here in Avalon may have it all. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Announcements? I believe we have an announcement.
Yes, Mayor. We will have, in addition to the brainstorming session, which will take place during the general business portion of the meeting, the city attorney also has a couple of mini presentations, if you will, that he's done at the request of council, which would suggest that we can either do right now or we can do just right before or after the brainstorming session. What's your pleasure?
Let's...
(Inaudible)
Oh, it's a PowerPoint, so maybe we can... Do you... Suggesting that we wait, then?
Oh, wait, so it's a little darker?
(Inaudible)
Okay.
Okay, so...
All right.
Well, I think actually, do we have hard copies of the presentation?
No.
No? You know, if you would... I think it's important, because I think it's going to help us with our discussion. If you could just forgive us for a couple minutes, we'll...
Sure.
And we can have public comment.
Exactly. And then we can do that.
Okay. Is there any other oral communication?
Good evening. Just wanted to inform the public and yourselves that the projects, Hinkle's projects for Edison on Metropole, due to the cultural resources that we found, as you all know, have extended their working period. And tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, they're going to be paving, asphalt paving down at the first location. So we would ask for the city's and the public's cooperation. As you know, there's just temporary steel plates there now. Hopefully, Friday afternoon, it's all going to be asphalt. And all those obstructions should be out of there. So we just wanted to let you know that there's going to be some activity down by that corner again, but it's just supposed to be for Thursday and Friday, weather permitting.
Excellent.
If you have any questions?
Hey, Dennis, can I ask you, what's going to be done on the sidewalk? Are we going to do some finish work on the sidewalk to get some of those bumps out of there?
Yes. Especially where the tree... Excuse me. Where the tree was removed, there's a little hump that needs to be flattened out. There's also a couple other areas that they have to repair.
Yes, sir.
The condition of their permit was to place everything as in kind. However, the tree that they removed developed a little hump that the city wants to see resolved.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
Um, I'm going to ask them to get on it as soon as possible.
Okay, great.
We're going to put a barricade there temporarily so that trip hazard doesn't exist any longer.
Yeah. Good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other oral communications?
Okay, so in short order, we're going to have some hard copies for you to review, which will make it a lot easier. But in the interim, we'll get started here.
Well, I maybe should ask, are there any written communications?
A good question, and no, there are not tonight. Thank you.
That's not on my list. Call to order pledge of... Oh, there it is. Okay, sorry, folks. This is when I don't want to speak into the mic, right? So maybe we have roll call? Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy. Sorry, Mayor Marshall. Sorry, Bob Kennedy. I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
I'm here.
Okay. I was asked through the council to give two brief discussions. The first is on the structure of the city of Avalon government. So the structure of the city of Avalon government is that of a city council, city manager government. The city council basically sets the policy, and it's up to the city manager and his staff to execute the policy. The city council can only take action at a meeting, which means that the city council cannot direct city manager or anyone to take action unless it's at a meeting. It has to be the city council as a whole. And generally speaking, for most items, you need three votes to take action. There are a couple exceptions, but the government code provides that there has to be three votes for the city council to act. The role of the city council is to establish, and this is from the Avalon Municipal Code 2.2.307, the role of the city council is to establish the general policies and goals for the city, and the city manager, as the administrative head of the government or the city, implements the goals or policy. So again, what we'll be discussing tonight is setting forth the general goals that you want to do, and then staff will execute them. The next section of the Municipal Code 2.2.308 says that the city council shall deal with the administrative services of the city. In other words, the actions that the city takes only through the city manager, and neither the council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinate of the city manager. So the council acting as a body can direct the city manager to take action, but individual council members or the council as a whole cannot direct people other than the city manager to take action. In Avalon, you also have a chief administrative officer. That is a newly created thing, and there's some minor things about... There's a lot of things that Denise can do. She is the administrative officer. And lastly, you can ask, the Municipal Code does ask for inquiries, so that if you have a question, like what's the status of this planning application or this matter, you can ask staff questions. But again, direction is directed to the city manager, or in your case, the chief administrative officer. So that's the structure that you have. It's basically the structure of every city in California other than a city where you don't have any staff and the council runs everything. There's very few of that. The second thing I was asked to address was closed sessions. Sometimes during a meeting, the council will recess into closed sessions. And sometimes people say, well, you know, why are you going into closed sessions? Shouldn't all of the activities that the city council takes be done in the public so that the public can see what's going on? And the Brown Act, which governs how we conduct meetings, says that you can go on certain limited occasions into closed session for the purpose of revealing, to avoid revealing confidential information that may, in certain circumstances, prejudice the legal negotiating position of the city or compromise the privacy interest of employees. So there's certain things that the state law, the state law says that you have to discuss in private because they implicate legal rights of employees and lawsuits. And so the basic ones that we see in Avalon, oh, and all the agendas have to include a description of what that closed session is. So when you look at the agenda, there's often a reference to cases if it's a lawsuit or if it's an employee evaluation. There is the title of the person being evaluated. And the Brown Act also says that you don't have to tell the public what you've done in closed session unless there's, then there's seven circumstances when you have to announce what the action is. Very, very limited. Generally, if it's not one of those seven, you do not have to make the announcement. So that's why most of the times we come out of closed session in the past, and we don't have a announcement, because the Brown Act says that you're either not supposed to make an announcement or you don't have to. So what type of things do we go into closed session for? A conference with real property, conference with real property negotiations. That's basically if the city's thinking about buying property or selling property, and we want to set a price for it or the terms. You don't want to be discussing the real estate deal in public, because if you're selling property, the people that may want to buy the property will know what the price is, and so you won't be able to get a better price. So it kind of makes sense. Second one is conference with legal counsel concerning existing or anticipated litigation. If you want to talk to your lawyers about the penancy of a lawsuit that is going on or if you want to talk to your lawyers about maybe starting a lawsuit, you don't want to have those discussions in public again, because the side that may be on the opposite side of litigation will be able to know the legal strategy. So that's another exception. The last, second last one is public employee appointment, evaluation, or discipline dismissal release. Certain public employees, if they're disciplined and it's coming up to the council for appeal or the council has...
Technology.
The council can decide whether they're going to appoint a position like the city manager. Those discussions are in pub, in private to protect the personnel rights and privacy rights of the people whose performance are being evaluated. And lastly, conference with labor negotiations. This is concerning when you're negotiating with your bargaining parties, the three unions that the city has. When you're discussing what the deal with the unions are going to be and what your negotiating stance is, the positions that you want to take, the key negotiating points, you want to have those discussions in public again, because if you're, if you can't negotiate if the other side is at the negotiating table and when you're forming your negotiating strategy. So those are the two presentations that I've been asked to give tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Now, to just explain a little bit more about the public employee appointment.
Okay. There are certain positions, like city manager, city attorney, or if you want to have a special interim position, that the city council will be making an appointment to. There, you usually do that in closed session. For instance, when we went out for the position of city manager, we had a bunch of resumes from city managers. We had like 48 resumes, and we discussed those. We had conducted the interviews in private. And so that is an instance where those discussions are in private.
I understand. And then, I've had questions before, and I think we all have. Is there always a place, or people say, well, why don't they just do the closed sessions at the end of the meeting so we don't have to sit here for 45 minutes while we go in closed session?
You can do closed sessions at the end of a meeting. You can do it at the beginning of the meeting. Sometimes when we're having closed sessions, we have people that would like to take the 7:30 vote back, and so for accommodate their schedule, we have, we have those closed sessions earlier. But you can do closed sessions at the end of the meeting. Some city councils start their regular meetings at 6:00 and always have closed sessions at 5:00. And so you'll know that on the agenda, it'll have the regular agenda, and it'll say closed sessions at 5:00, and then a regular meeting starts at 6:00. So that if they get done before 5:00, they can't start the regular portion of the meeting until 6:00 o'clock. So you could obviously have that option. It's basically just to accommodate people that, for some reason, need to get off of the island by the 7:30 vote.
Right. Makes sense. Well, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from what we've just heard? Okay. Consent calendar, there is none. So general business, we're going to go into the study session, and Ben Harvey is our city manager, is going to facilitate this portion of our meeting. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I want to welcome the council to our first brainstorming session as a newly elected and composed city council. I envision that we will probably need to have more than one of these sessions, probably multiple, in order to give it its proper due. I'm also going to suggest, probably to the delight, hopefully, of everyone here, that we go tonight, no more than two hours, and we don't certainly have to go that entire time either. But I just want to have us all avoid fatigue on the topic and on the process and to keep the energy levels high. So that's the goal. As Scott pointed out, city council in Avalon is the what. You know, what are we doing? What are our goals? What are our priorities? And as a city manager, I'm your administrative head of government. I'm the hat. It's my job to figure out how to take what you've directed me to do and implement it. So I do not have a vote in creating what the priorities are. And so it's entirely appropriate for me to facilitate this discussion for allow, and to allow you, Mayor, to be a part of the body, to help in the formulation. So I think this is a good role reversal here for tonight so that I can allow you to be an active participant.
Perfect.
So we're brainstorming, so I want to, just at the very start, share some very basic brainstorming guidelines that I could hope that we could all adhere to. So I'm just going to read these to you, and I think this will be helpful as we try to go through and establish some goals this evening. So here are the rules. Let the ideas flow freely. No evaluating until later. There are no bad ideas. No bad ideas. No debating. Everyone participates. Build, not tear down, on the ideas of others. Be creative. Think in new ways. Break out of old patterns and keep the discussion moving. So does that sound like a reasonable set of ground rules we can all try to adhere to this evening?
Yes.
Sorry, any questions about any of the rules and why they might be there? Okay. Very good. Then I'll keep going. So again, we're looking to have multiple meetings. Some of the goals that we create tonight, I envision that we will need to have more time to study. They may require additional clarification. And so we want to be mindful of that. And so we're going to be creating a document tonight from this, and it's certainly going to be available to the public too, for you to take home after this meeting to review on your own, because I expect that this discussion may bring some other ideas. Or you may want to modify things. Or perhaps your spouse has an idea. Or, you know, you are elected delegates of our republic here. So as such, you may have constituents that might want to come to you to bring forth an idea of their own for you to vet. So that will be a tool, a takeaway, if you will. It won't be, obviously, ready immediately after tonight, but shortly thereafter, we'll have this to you so you can use that. So what we're looking to do tonight is create what I'm calling smart goals, okay? And SMART stands for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time set, okay? And that's important. And I'll give you a good example as to why that's important. So a smart goal might be something like the following. By June 30th, 2016, we will reduce the city budget deficit by 50% while maintaining the current city service levels. Okay? That's something that's specific. It's measurable. Now, it might be debatable as to if it's achievable, but I'm an optimist, so I think so. Relevant, well, certainly. And time set, yeah, absolutely. We've got a time plugged in there. So, and this is completely fantasy and a folly, but just in the interest of illustration, a bad example might be, you know, we will move Catalina Island closer to Long Beach sometime in the next, you know, few years. I mean, just, we got to be grounded in some type of reality. It has to be relevant to what we're all here for. Prioritizing is going to come later. So we're going to work to brainstorm this evening, create this additional set of goals, and at a future meeting, we will then work on the prioritization of that. And then there's a couple methods that we can use to address that. I would recommend something like multi-voting, which is a process wherein if a particular item is so important to you, you could give it multiple votes of the votes that you're awarded, you know, in order to stress the significance to you. But we can get to that. So I just want you to park prioritization for tonight. This is all about getting the ideas out there, okay? Are there any questions about what a smart goal is and what we're trying to do this evening from anybody?
I think we're okay for now.
We're okay. Okay, so bite-sized pieces. So to start this off, I'm going to ask everyone here on the council to consider a couple things, and then I'm going to put you to work, okay? Everybody in front of them should have a pad of paper and a pen, I hope. Every council member has that? Excellent. Okay. So this council, with almost definite certainty, will work together for the next two years at a minimum. It could be more than that, but we know for sure, the mayor's on a two-year term, Ollie's got two years remaining in his term, as does Rich, so it's two years together for certain, and it could be certainly much longer than that. So with that in mind, I want you to imagine that it is April 23rd, 2016, okay? Flash forward two years. So what are the specific achievements, accomplishments, and outcomes that you would like to see for our city? All right? That's the first part. Secondly, upon reflection, what would you like our residents, our visitors, and our employees to say about our work at the end of this two-year period?
Say that again?
Upon reflection, what would you like our residents, our visitors, and our employees to say about our work at the end of this period? Okay? So not only are you thinking about where you want to be, but this is also kind of the how part about that, so that at the end of that period, what are people saying about what's been done and the results? Not only people that live here, people that visit here, but the people who work here to make this happen. Okay? So what we're going to do is we're going to start things off. Everybody here has a notepad, and I realize some of you might have done some thinking before coming in tonight. Maybe you even brought some things written down. Whatever the case may be, just to keep it fresh and to allow the most relevant and salient items to hit the paper, I want you to spend the next seven minutes, and forgive me viewing audience, this is going to be boring as hell to the rest of you, but...
(Inaudible) I have a question from viewing audience. (Inaudible) I think if we were going to be able to participate and contribute to these planning goals, and so far, you totally have not acknowledged any kind of public input.
Well, Mayor, if you don't mind, I could address that if you're okay with that.
Sure.
Okay. So Mr. Ramey, we, there's, here's the thought. So we're going, as the elected delegates of the republic, these five members have been voted into office to represent you and everyone else here in the city. So we're giving them the first stab based upon what they know from speaking with their constituents and from working here as to what they believe the goal should be. This is a publicly, this is a public noticed meeting. So at the tail end of our work here this evening, we are, of course, going to open it up so the public can comment on what work the council has done tonight. Does that sound reasonable? And the reason why we're proposing to use this approach, if I could just continue, is we don't want it to get unwieldy. We want it to be able to be that they, you know, we can, we can get some things down on paper, we can feel uninhibited here about trying to let, set these forth, and then this will allow the public who's here tonight, or the viewing public, we're going to splash things up on the board here, and they can reflect on that. And at the tail end of the discussion, absolutely, we're going to let people come forward and be allowed that time to comment. Sound okay?
Yes.
Okay. Does that sound okay to the council and the mayor?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So with that, if you don't mind, get your, get your notepad handy, please, and your pen. And for the next seven minutes, I want you to think about that, flashing forward two years from now, what it is you're looking to achieve, what accomplishments and outcomes you want, and how you want the people that live here, the people that visit here, and the people who work here, feel about that at the end of that time period, okay? So we're going to allow you to work for the next seven minutes, starting now, and then I'll just let you know when you're halfway through and then when time's up. And you, and sorry, just real quick before we get started, you are going to be reading off your own piece of paper, okay? Everyone's going to be, will be going through and having you present it, and we'll be splashing it up here.
And so if there's some people who don't feel real comfortable, if you like what somebody says, they can just go ditto, right?
Say again?
So if you have the same thought.
If someone, yeah, if somebody, if somebody has the same thought, they can just go ditto.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I guess the more, the important thing being there are no bad ideas.
Right. The more the merrier.
The more the merrier. Absolutely.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, thank you. Seven minutes. Gonna give us a signal? Okay, excellent. Okay, so, we have all spent the last seven minutes or so, taking time to write down what we're looking to hopefully achieve, what the outcomes are in these next two years, and keeping in mind how our residents and our visitors and our employees feel about these outcomes. So, we're big on acronyms over here, so wanna roll out another one to you, but I think it's important. So, as we're creating SMART goals and we're discussing them, when we make our comments, all of the comments need to pass what we're calling the THINK test, okay? So, the THINK test is the comments need to be thoughtful, honest, insightful, needed, and most importantly, kind. If you leave the kind out, then the think becomes a little thin, okay? So, I wanna try to keep that in mind, because remember, there are no bad ideas, and so just want that, I think that's helpful for us as we work together here. So, I'm gonna ask Jordan to please come on up to the easel. Jordan is gonna be our scribe this evening, so Jordan has confessed that his handwriting is not too dissimilar from mine, so if he needs to spend some more time to make sure it's legible, you'll please forgive him. And what I thought we would do is if we could just go through each member, and maybe we could share one of the ideas that we wrote down, and allow each member to think about it, comment on it, and we'll put it up there on the board until we've taken care of every single comment that you wrote down. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Councilmember Sampson, would you like to start with the first potential goal that you came up with on your list?
Sure. That would be a more people-friendly city, meaning cleaner city streets, cleaner trashcans, cleaner and remodeled restrooms, cleaner and functioning drinking fountains, better crosswalks, more crosswalks, and walking lanes, just to start.
Excellent. So, as we go along, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to make sure that we clarify our goals, and that's just in the event that anybody doesn't understand a goal. Now, Councilmember Sampson seems, I can understand, I believe, what he's asking. He's been specific as to what he's looking for, and Councilmember, I'm assuming that you're wanting that to happen, obviously, in that two-year time period. That's when you're looking for these things to take place.
Yes, sir.
So, is there anybody that did not understand this goal? Okay. Would any other council member like to comment or add to that goal?
I think just safety on the streets. I know that we talked about, we talked a little bit about Five Corners and that Sumner, you know, Sumner Beacon kind of thing. There might be some hotspots that might need to be addressed.
Okay. So, Mayor, I think that you're obviously agreeing with Councilmember Sampson on this, and you're just further drilling down as to some areas in particular that you think are of concern?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else on this particular goal? You look like you have a...
No, I was just determining whether one of my items was along the same line, but I actually believe it's different, so I'm gonna wait.
Okay. And I fully would expect that we would have some very common goals.
Oh, yeah.
That's terrific. Okay. Mayor Protem Olson, would you like to share one of your goals?
April 2016 will be the end of the second year of balanced budgets.
Okay. So, is there a time, and I'm just gonna jump right in, because I'm trying to help us clarify. Would that include a start date?
If it's the end of the second year...
Okay, so this is the very, so that's when it starts?
Fiscal 13, 14, and then 15, yeah. Fiscal 13, or 14, 15 will be balanced, and 15, 16 will be the second year of the balance.
Okay. Council, do you have any input or questions, or does everyone, does anyone not understand that goal? Scribe, are you able to get these down? Can anyone besides you read that?
We'll remember.
All right. Members of the public, please feel free, if you need to stand up to see what he's written. It's not your fault. Okay. Mayor, would you like to share one of your...
I'm sorry, can I add? I'm sorry. I was waiting for you to ask that question. I just want to add to the balanced budget. That was definitely one of my topics, that along that, to better streamline the processes and procedures in our finance department, to better help them accomplish the goals that they need to in order to better be able to give information to the council and to city management, obviously. And also, to possibly streamline our auditing processes, what needs to be audited, what doesn't. I'd like to add that in there.
What I would suggest, and this is just one person, a facilitator, talking, to me, those are related, but they are separate from that goal. What I'm hearing is I heard one goal about achieving a balanced budget with a date, and I'm hearing from you, I think, two separate goals, which is providing additional, either direction or assistance or parameters to the finance department to deliver key information and/or function more efficiently.
Yes, and I believe that they go hand in hand, because as most of us have reviewed several of the council meetings in the past, this information was not available for this program not working, or we couldn't get it into this program, or we're doing two different sets of something or another. So, I'm saying whatever we need to do to help the finance department...
Sure.
...to be able to get us to the point where we know how much money we have, we know where it all sits, and we know what our budget is, and have a better understanding.
In the interest of keeping them very specific, I would respectfully recommend to bifurcate them, and then I would also ask if you had a date or timeframe associated with that.
Well, I don't think anything's gonna fix overnight, but with, I mean, within, Ole has the right mind in saying by the end of two years, we have the second year of a balanced budget. And I support that goal, however, it's going to take time to get to that point, it's going to take time to determine. So, I would say within the two years, by the end of the two-year period, which is what I originally thought the question was, I'd like to be at a point where we have a very smooth-running finance department, that they feel comfortable in being able to provide the information that's requested of them.
Okay. So, we can add back...
But adding to that, we'll never know if we have a balanced budget if we don't get it back together before two years.
Well, yeah, that's, I'm trying to respectfully say that I don't, I don't know all the inner workings at this time, so I'm saying I would like to give whatever it takes within the next two years to get them to the point of where, within a short, short period of time, they can answer those questions.
Okay.
How about we be a little more challenging, say at the end of next year?
Ooh.
I mean, if we set a goal of 2016, it, there's an excuse there to wait till 2016. I think we've been spending a year on it. I think we're close, and I think we need a goal that's a little more attainable in the short term.
Get more aggressive, if you like.
But we're gonna be working on the timelines later.
Right.
Well, we're gonna work on the prioritization, and we can also always add an asterisk, asterisk, excuse me, to anything where we need clarification, or if we need some additional research. The other thing that you can do is there may be something that comes up here where you all like it, or maybe it's really important to one member in particular, and we can put that in a parking lot, just so we don't lose track of it. Maybe it doesn't completely fit with whatever we're doing, but it's a good thing, and so you have that at your disposal, too. And then, while we're on this little interlude, if I could just say one more thing, it is my sincere hope that, working together to come up with all these, that we adopt goals as a council body. So, in other words, there may be goals where you don't feel particularly fervent about that, but whatever we decide the goals are, we adopt them as a whole, and we support them as a whole. And I would want that such that we didn't ever end up in a situation where, you know, you're out in the public and you felt compelled to say, well, you know, I didn't, that wasn't my goal. Instead, it would be, you know, yeah, that was one of our goals. Anyway, if that could be what we're working towards, I think that's important. I want us to be together. Okay. All right. So, Mayor, I believe it's your turn?
It's water. And everything about it, because in two years and before, I don't want people to have to be bringing, as Wayne said, bringing their towels and their sheets over and bottled water to the mainland, so, from the mainland. So, I would hope, definitely before two years, we figure this whole water mess out and look at what other, what options we have, like the reclaimed water, I don't know, deselling our homes, I don't care, but I think we aggressively need to, that's a, well, that's a big one. So, I don't know if I need to be more specific, but we want people to be able to shower in two years.
So, perhaps if I could just add to that a little bit as a suggestion, maybe, you know, direct staff to aggressively pursue additional water resources, working with not only innovators, but also island stakeholders, and looking at everything from the tariffs that control how water is sold on the island, to things like the building codes, where new construction is required to capture rainwater, as, you know, not putting words in your mouth.
No, all of those kinds of things, yeah. We have to brainstorm the options within the water realm.
So, I think this would be a good example of a goal where we would want to put an asterisk on it and say, you know, we're going to further, this is a very large, encompassing, and important goal, and maybe we want to spend some time really diving into that.
Yes, I think we all do, sitting in this room.
Kind of water's our destiny, and we have no control over it now. Maybe we want to try to exercise some control over it, either through interjection with the PUC, or becoming a municipal water district, or something along those lines, so that we can control some of our destiny that we're not controlling right now.
We can control things like the top water storage. We could be dredging our water supplies, our storage supplies, our reservoirs, ponds, and aquifer areas, so that they work more efficiently and they hold more water. That's something you do when there's not a lot of rain, and you do that in droughts. You don't do that when you have a full capacity of water, and so you can't do that. They do it in Mexico, that when the water dries up, they dredge their, they dredge their top water storage, so that the next season, they have more capacity. It's just something sensible communities do.
So, I've heard a couple of different things, and they're definitely related. What I first heard from the Mayor Protem, I believe, was to pursue a community services district in order to control the water on the island. That's what I heard. And I just want to make sure that that's, okay. And then, from Councilmember Sampson, in a related comment, I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we need to aggressively work with whoever controls the water on the efficiency in which it is extracted. I don't want to misstate either one, so is that correct?
That's, that's had something to do with my comment. It was a little more broad, broad scope, but yes, I want to aggressively pursue that, but also, I want to see what we could do to expand our top water storage areas.
Okay.
So that our, like, let's say Thompson Reservoir, for that matter, we have Thompson, we have Hay Press, we have, we've got some serious fire suppression problems right now, and we usually rely on our ponds and our reservoirs. If there was a fire in the wilderness, then the helicopters could draw water out of those areas. The fire trucks could also pump water out of those areas, no matter what canyons they're in. There's probably about eight or 10 different reservoirs that are bone dry right now that could be dredged out. Now, we only have two that we utilize for water, which is Bull Rush Canyon and Thompson Reservoir and Middle Ranch Canyon, which are getting pretty low. It's a good time to, my suggestion was dredge them out. Other words, take the dirt that has filled up, the soil and the soot that has filled up over the years in those reservoirs, and remove it and get rid of it. And I have talked to Ron Height, and he says we have to ship it off the island. I've talked to Joe Callow at the conservancy as well, and he says, yeah, there's a problem with the removal, not the removal of the dirt, but what are we gonna do with it? So, the expense would be shipping it off the island, taking it, putting it in trucks, bringing it all the way into town, onto barges, and getting rid of it, because they can, I don't know how this works, but they consider it, they consider it waste soil. It's actually hazardous waste is what they consider the... It's actually hazardous waste is what they consider, the soil that our water supply is sitting over, so, under. So, so anyway, just, it was dredging. And then aggressively, yes, making our runoff and, and areas where the water flows into a little more easy for the water to get into there. There's a lot of debris, there's a lot of plants that have grown around our runoff areas, and I think that that needs, needs to be looked at right now, while the water level is down. And it's, it requires a community effort, because it's something, everybody in the community needs the water, but it's on conservancy land. Edison is part of this as well, and we're the ones that are going to push it forward, because we're the ones that want to make this happen. So, yeah, just storage, top water storage.
Got it.
Because, because when we get into talking about aquifers and drilling into ancient aquifers, or this bedrock aquifer, it kind of scares me, because I've read, I've read quite a bit on aquifers, and when you start getting into tapping into aquifers that are below the aquifers that we're already utilizing, there's a chance that our total top water storage could be depleted. And we don't want that, because we want to be able to access that, not just for, for the natural resources that already depend on that, and the birds and the animals that depend on that, but the emergency services that we may, that may need to access that water if we have a fire problem, if we have a fire. So, anyway, that makes it a little more complicated, but all the same, this all has to be on the table when we're talking about water. And it's probably going to be something that gets up to be in the top five of what our priorities are into the future.
Okay, very good. Okay, great. Okay, Councilmember Hernandez, I believe it's your turn.
Number one was water, also, on my top list, but then also, the close second was the infrastructure without, within the city right now. We know what kind of problems we have with all the old plumbing and the new stuff is getting along. We've got to start figuring out ways to make people accountable and help subsidize the city for the cost of our infrastructure. We are getting more people on the island nowadays, and that's what I'd really like us to really work on in the next couple of years. We know we've had problems in the past and recent, so I would like to see us really work on our infrastructure stuff and people help subsidize us, the contractors or whoever's building big projects. Maybe we could look at that as an option. But infrastructure in the city is pretty important right now, I think, to us.
So, sure. So to clarify, looking at the infrastructure and the fees and the rates that support it, and determining ways to make that self-sustaining and healthy.
Correct.
And everything, from new development to connection fees to what we're charging currently.
Right.
Okay, excellent. Does anyone not understand that, that goal? Anyone like to comment on that goal?
Well, I just think, and it's also then back to just the infrastructure in general, you know, getting the mall redone, you know, the casino dock, sewer treatment plan, I mean, all of those big items that have to be done, probably sooner than later, I would think, every one of them. So, and fees is just one way to help them, but I mean, yeah.
Sure. What I might also offer for consideration is, due to the magnitude of some of these projects, we may want to specifically identify individual goals to hit some of those areas that you outlined, not only sewer and saltwater, but then also maybe as a separate goal, the mall specifically, and the rehabilitation of that, and then perhaps separately, you know, the fuel dock and the rehabilitation of that, and so forth. Because, you know, this is, these are all hugely important, they're all going to require a huge amount of capital. In some cases, we have some grant funds that are available to us that can help us get there. But that would be helpful to staff, and Denise and Scott, feel free to jump in here, having those as specific goals and knowing ultimately, when we get to prioritization, where they stand as to what should be our work list.
Right, right. And then you need to tell us that, too, because you know better than we when somebody drives a truck on the mall, when they're going to, you know, when they're going to go through the mall. I mean, we don't know those kinds of things.
And maybe then also as a separate, and just to expound upon that, a separate goal could be, you know, a holistic inventory and then a timeframe, so that, so that as a council, you know what the expected lifespan is.
Exactly.
And what type of investment is going to be required. And we have some of those studies already finished, we have some that are in the works, and so we, we can, we're started on that, we've made really good progress, but we could, if that's a goal, we could finish that, so you know, okay, I've got five years more on this, I've got 10 years more on this, this is the capital that I'm going to need to somehow set aside in order to properly fund that.
Yes, that's really important.
When you finish that list, we incorporate.
I would just add, looking forward to the next two council meetings, at the next council meeting, one of the items on the agenda is the development of the 20-year capital plan to address this. And in the meeting after that, we're going to be having a study session on funding mechanisms for large, large infrastructure projects.
Great idea.
So, we've kind of, well.
Yeah, no, that's perfect.
We read your minds.
I know, thank you.
Why did I write it down?
Because it's important, and we're glad you did.
Why did I write it down?
It's all important.
Shouldn't I have ever wrote it down?
Does anyone have anything additional on that particular goal? Okay. Well, according to the card, Councilman Cassidy.
We need to address that, too. We need to fix that, yeah.
Please, a goal?
Another goal is, I believe by April 2016 is the, is the requirement, I'd like to meet the goals and requirements of the cease and desist order with continued programs in place. So not just meet the requirements of the CDO, but also, you know, ongoing plans, programs in place, and as we continue to develop programs, not just for what we need to do for the requirement, but other programs as well, more than what they're requiring.
Got it.
My simplistic thing was get rid of the CDO. Or we have completed the CDO.
That would be nice.
Well, is that the same goal or a different goal?
It's, they kind of work together. I mean, if we could, at the end of, or at the beginning of 2016, go to Regional Board and say, hey, you know, we've had
Very good.
18 months worth of no exigencies, why do you still impose this stuff on us?
Based upon performance.
Based on performance.
Right, okay. So, does that make sense, Jordan?
What? Can you read that back?
Slowly.
Yeah, really.
I was just going to say, so Denise, do you mind, this is an appropriate junction, I think, to mention an upcoming event that relates to this, is that what you're speaking to?
Yes, exactly.
Do you mind talking about that briefly, really quick?
Sorry. On Friday, May 16th, we're having an Avalon Bay Water Symposium here in the chambers, and we've invited a lot of, or all the stakeholders that we've been involved with, as well as we've sent it to different community members, and, but we are inviting the public to that. And it will be starting at 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and we'll have an agenda out eventually on that. We're working on it, May 16th.
And when she mentioned stakeholders, we're talking about environmental stakeholders as well as regulatory stakeholders, so groups like Heal the Bay, but also, of course, water quality boards and other folks, so.
Yeah, we're going to have people from the state, Heal the Bay, people that have been working on the cease and desist to explain how it first arose, what we've done, and what we have to do going forward. So it'll be, it's one of the things that the Water Board really encouraged us to do, and they're very happy that we're taking this step. And again, we're always trying to show them that we're responding, that we're improving water, and this is a step that they, that they like. And so, again, in three weeks, it's a good opportunity to, for everyone to come and express the city's interest in keeping the water, getting, keeping the progress going forward.
And you're inviting them to bring their bathing suits and towels, correct? We're going to do kayaking and all that, we have to show them a little fun when they're here, too.
We are doing a little field trip during the day.
Oh, okay.
Is SC on that list?
USC, the Marine Institute, yes, they are.
Okay, excellent. Any additional comments on that particular goal, anyone? Okay. Councilmember Sampson, another goal that you wrote down, please.
Okay, I think we need to get a whole, get a better handle on the, okay, there are greetings at the mall, so our mall's kind of in disarray right now. I mean, and there's, you know, people come in, and yeah, it's a little stark out there, there's not much to it, but you look at Avalon, they're not looking at the mall. When you arrive, you're looking at Avalon, you're going, this is the most beautiful place I've ever seen. But the mall itself, just the functioning of it, is falling apart, so we need to make it, I mean, people don't look at that, but we need to make it a little safer for the people that actually do utilize it, the shop owners, the Catalina Express, I'm sure deserves a better facility that they have. Basically, we want to keep it from falling apart, but at the same time, we need, as a community, to greet the people. And what I understand is we're going to have a little better transportation at that point, so maybe some public transportation, something that doesn't pollute the town with noise, nor with exhaust pollution as well. So just the reception that people get when they get here to Avalon, maybe a greeter, somebody points, somebody pointing out. When I was a kid, they had, Duke Fishman was out there, and Mr. Clean, he was the greeter, and he, basically, they had a mariachi band out there and waving to everybody, and you're on Catalina, it's a festive place to be, it's a beautiful place to be, there was people pointing, the taxis are here, public transportation's here, you can take the walkway that goes into town here, the golf carts are right into town on the left. Basically, transportation businesses are this way. And so greeting and infrastructure at the mall, I think that's kind of important right now. Get people into town, get them spending money.
Right.
Bottom line.
So the mall infrastructure we already talked about, so you're also then talking about just making it a more friendly and a more inviting place when they get off that block.
Greeting, yeah, that's it.
Excellent.
Does anyone not understand that goal? Okay. Any additional comments on that? Okay. Mayor Protem Olson?
In support of some earlier goals, I think the city should support the League for the restitution of, or the re-establishment of tax increment financing available for capital projects, basically replacing redevelopment. And that's something that we don't necessarily directly do, we just support the League of California cities, so they can get it through to Sacramento, so that we have a resource to fix all this stuff we've got to fix. It's a funding source.
Write it up.
Thank you.
Great.
Right. And what, our annual increment was, what, $600,000 before it was dissolved, is that roughly?
No, I believe it was much more than that.
Was it more than that?
Yeah, I think we got about a mi, well, I think if you, I think it was maybe 1.2.
Yeah, 1.2, and then that, a bunch went to low-cost housing.
Yeah.
For housing set aside.
Okay.
Probably, what, 400,000, 200,000, 300,000?
Significant.
Yeah. Well, because we're looking, we lose a bunch of subsidized housing in 2016, because the subsidy on New Tremont goes away, because it was a 30-year subsidy. So we have a bunch of units that are going to become, quote, market rate then.
Oh, you can explain that again.
When they built Hamilton, New Tremont was inclusionary housing for that, and the 70 units, I think 50 of them are Section 8 housing, so they're really subsidized, while it was a 30-year contract. The contract expired in 2016, so the subsidy goes away, the Section 8 money goes away. So people who live in the highly subsidized units will go to market rate. And so if you were paying 400 bucks, all of a sudden, you're going to be paying 1,600 bucks, or whatever it is.
Right, yeah, and they just went up.
Yeah, I mean, but the, yeah.
The market rates just went up. Well, that's kind of a big deal.
It is.
Put that on the list.
Okay. Got that. Mayor?
Just maintaining a professional staff within the city, and providing staff development where needed, so that, because it's a detriment to the city if we have turnover, and, you know, because it's nice to have the knowledge stay, and so, anyway, just to keep staff development and the hiring of qualified people on our staff.
So focus on professionalization and continuing education and staff development?
Yes.
Okay.
Nicely said.
I would just like to add a more cohesive city team, maybe some team-building exercises, maybe some time where
Some organizational development as well.
Yeah, departments maybe are able to work together differently, and definitely more training, whether that's with new employees coming on, or our current employees that we have, giving them the training to do some of the jobs that we hire consultants for, or that we hire other companies to do the work that our employees could be doing, if, even with a little bit of training.
Okay. Okay. Any additional add-ons to that goal? Very good. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, the gas dock. The one that we've
Fuel dock?
Yeah, the fuel dock, the one we've been kicking around for a couple of years. I'd like to see that, within the next couple of years, figure out what we're going to do with it, or maybe somebody will take it off our hands, or if not, we need to fix everything up there. It's in pretty poor shape right now. I guess that would be under the infrastructure part of it, too, and see if we can't get rid of those restrooms that come along with it out there, too, somewhere along the line. How we got that, I'll never know. It's not our building, the restrooms are in the casino, but that was before my time, I guess. But see if we can't figure out something with that gas dock, because it's pretty poor shape out there right now.
Would completely agree, and just, today, this is one of our ongoing projects, but getting as a goal to focus and galvanize us and moving it forward is very important. We do have grant monies that expire in the near term, that we, it'd be a shame if we weren't able to avail ourselves of that. So that's excellent, that's a good one to put there in the goals. Additional comments on the fuel dock? And did I hear a separate sub-goal is considering having the operations demonisified as well? Not having city employees
Yeah, if somebody wants to buy the gas dock from us, or whatever, or take the contract from us, that would be great.
Good, just one, yeah.
That would be great for the city.
Is that the same person we could sell a bridge to?
Any, any questions or comments about that goal, does everyone understand that goal? Okay. Councilmember Cassidy?
The other items that I have are items that I think that we would just be working on, that we wouldn't actually be able to accomplish, so.
Do you want to put them in a parking lot, so that we don't lose sight of them, or, you know, I don't want to discourage you from sharing anything? It's all, you know, no bad ideas.
Well, I would certainly like to, over the next couple of years, determine the contracts that we have, if financially they're the best fit for, best bang for our buck, insurances, the particular contracts we have now, and I don't want anybody's feathers to get ruffled, but Envire on CR and R, just, are these the best contracts that we have? And going forward, where do we want to see those contracts, what do we want to see happen in different areas?
So a comprehensive contract review. Okay. Very good. Anyone have anything that they'd like to contribute on that goal?
Sounds good.
Okay. Councilmember Sampson?
I think the people of Avalon, the working people of Avalon, for the most part, we work three jobs, some people work two, three jobs, there's a lot of kids that need recreation, so we definitely have to plunge ahead with supporting our workforce by supporting the recreational and social needs. So that would include housing, I mean, people need affordable, dignified housing, they need recreation, we need better access to the interior, maybe we could work with the conservancy a little better, to see if they could help us out with programs that, we could actually have an organized, let's see, an organized have an organized, um, let's see, an organized Saturday or Sunday where we take people out to different places in the interior, have a little hike, maybe a little lunch, a little sack lunch, um, and something to get people out of, uh, the bumping grind that we have here, um, give 'em a break, because, um, this is a small city, uh, with a lot of people in it, and, um, people find it very difficult to, um, relax, uh, re-energize, redeem themselves, and so they can, they can feel fresh, and they can get back into the workforce, and they can be good stewards of, of what our hus- um, what our hospitality should represent. And, uh, so, it's basically, um, a swimming pool, would be nice, recreation center, um, figure out exactly where that's gonna be into the future, I guess that would go into, um, um, some of the, uh, the big, the big, um, investments that we're gonna have to make into the future, but, um, in the, in the interim, we need to recognize that the people in Avalon, they, they, they need to relax, they, they, they've been under a lot of pressure in the last few years, people are pretty tense, people are pretty uptight, um, and we really need to recognize that we need to give them a little love, and that's the people in our community that, that make it all work, that, that make the clock tick as it, as it, as it may sound, um, that's the basis.
So, Joe, are you talking about additional recreational space as well as activities for the community, and, and support the pool as well, is that kind of...
I would like to support the pool as well, but yeah, keep the activities flowing to where we can support our workforce, uh, because there's a lot of, of families and kids that they can't do that for themselves, for themselves, so we as a community have to pick that up. And then we got all the kids coming over from the mainland, and we want to keep it, um, a kid-friendly place from the mainland too, I mean, um, our, our skate park has been dilapidated, um, our swimming pool area over here has turned into a parking lot, um, I mean, it doesn't look really nice, um, just, in general, yeah, make it better for, um, for the families so that their children can have a place to, and a safe and, um, a, a safe and, uh, educational environment, and, and something that, we can challenge them too, we can teach them about Catalina, we can teach them swimming lessons, we can teach them games, I, I like what, um, the recreation that we're already doing, which we have on the beach, that's, that's really fun, um, we sandcastle contests, um, just, just running with them, in, in general, and then utilize the entire island, because some of the families can't, can't, they don't have a means to get out in the interior, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna be acquiring some, some buses in the near future for, for, um, our, um, our, our general, um, uh, transportation for Avalon, maybe we can ta- take people up to Hay Press, uh, once a week to have a little barbecue and, um, and a little hike out there or something, just, that's, that's what I'm talking about, recreation in general, just expand that a bit.
Sure, and just on that note, I, we will be coming back to you in short order, just on the topic of getting folks out into the interior, we're working with Supervisor Kenabi's office on some grant funding to the Conservancy for that very purpose, to get that started, and, you know, might not be, unfortunately, with the frequency that the council member was, was hoping for, but I think that, when I last spoke with Connie Siebel about this, we were hoping for a monthly opportunity where folks that live on the island could, could avail themselves of that free ride out into the interior on a scheduled day each month.
But, but also, I just want to add that the Conservancy already has a program called Families in Nature, and, and this part, I may be talking out of turn, but I believe it's free, and I believe it is once a month, and any family can sign up and go, spend the day in the interior, I believe you just pack a sack lunch with you, and, and so that, that is one program that the Conservancy already offers.
Great.
But maybe supplementing that would be good.
So, this would be in addition to that, absolutely, in trying to, and I think that's what the council member's talking about, is just...
Right.
Right, okay. I also heard a, a goal, uh, in your discussion, council member, about affordable housing as well, did you want to expound upon that, or did you want to talk about that part too, or do you want to park that for now?
Affordable, dignified housing, uh, there's a lot of single, um, single parents, and it's hard for them to afford, um, and I know this is, this is a really tough thing to talk about, and, and I, my expertise is, is, is limited in this area, I don't know a lot about it, uh, but I can tell you what the needs are of the community, that way there's a goal that maybe we could reach, there's a lot of single parents in Avalon, and they can't afford, um, 12, uh, 15, 1800 for a one and two-bedroom house, and, um, they don't need it, quite frankly, um, well, I mean, they, they need a one, studios and one bedrooms, um, twos at the most, but, um, they need to be small places that are really affordable, um, they don't need the luxuries, they just, people just want a little place that they can call home, and that they can afford, so they don't have to, to sacrifice that third job for the time that they could be spending with their kids, and that's what we're seeing right now, is, is the city's picking up a lot of the, the recreation that, and, and the churches do this as well, um, the churches pick up a lot of, um, uh, the kids that, um, don't have a lot to do, and, um, becau- because, and they don't, they don't have any direction, because their, their, their parents have to work all the time, and you can't blame the parents, it's like something that I think that, that we could just put a little attention to, the next time we have an opportunity to make a, to, to build, um, affordable, dignified housing, maybe we could center in on small families, um, single families, single, single parents that are trying to make ends meet.
Okay. Anyone not understand that goal? Okay. Mayor Proton Olson?
Let's begin again, um, here's a revenue stream. We have a facility, Avalon Harbor, which I think is underutilized, I think there's some revenue that we're leaving on the table, I think we need to increase utilization of the harbor to bring more money into the harbor department, and bring more money in the harbor fund to help us fund things like the casino restrooms.
I think we just need to work on increasing utilization of the harbor facilities.
Can you give me an idea what you're talking about?
We have a lot of moors out there that are empty a lot of time of the year.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Basically, yeah, some, really brass tacks, really, really low-hanging fruit.
Well, then, and along that, oh, go ahead.
No, no, please, continue, please.
So, kind of along those lines, um, working more with the Chamber of Commerce, um, in, so that our goals are kind of the same, or how we can piggyback and help each other so that through the sponsorship of either events or, I'm just, I'm real open right here, um, but more event planning perhaps can bring more people in, and maybe more boating type of activities that would bring the bo- boaters over, so something that, because we have a lot of down weekends, just, you know, we talked about the, the motorcycle race, but we have a lot of empty weekends that perhaps we could work at getting more things done, and make, make it a year-round place for people to come and have fun.
I, I would see those as similar, but as actually separate, I would see, one is specifically focused on the harbor and, and the other being, um, in, events and the shoulder season in, in general, and working with the Chamber of Commerce, I, this, just from this perch over here, that's, and, and they're, they're both in the same direction, but in, in the interest of keeping them specific, I might just suggest that we have one goal specifically focused on harbor usage and, and the monies associated with that, and then a, a separate goal about increasing events.
Right.
Uh, particularly with a focus on the shoulder season and in concert with the Chamber of Commerce, something like that.
Sure.
Okay.
That sounded great.
Okay, good.
Because I just don't know about boaters, if it's middle of January, I don't know what you have, will they come anyway, just because we're having a good thing, do they, do they risk bringing their boats over in...
Well, it doesn't rain over here anymore, last time I checked, so, you know, I think January's fine, right?
February's beautiful, yeah, okay.
Don't see that.
But just more event planning and working with whomever to make those things happen.
One thing that we are, the harbor master and I have been working on that we need to kick into high gear is something along the lines, I think, of what you're both talking about, wherein there could be a, for lack of a better term, a free Wednesday-type event, wherein, you know, if you sign up for it, and it's one of those beautiful days in January or February, and the harbor's empty, you know, perhaps a Twitter or an email blast goes out offering, you know, a, a discount or a free, a free moorings for the night, um, you know, on, on a first-come, first-served basis, or with certain parameters set around it, in the interest of getting people into town, stay, you know, spending money while they're here.
Right, right.
Trying to give people an excuse to get, to get here.
Okay.
Okay, so, I think, Mayor, it's your turn, unless you want to pass on to Councilmember Hernandez, because you...
Well, just, okay, I think, you can, you can tell me, there's some, we need to work on our hospital, right, and there's a deadline on something, there's a deadline on the...
Other for construction, right?
As a, as a, as a rural hospital, we have certain seismic requirements that we need to make and, and upgrades, which, when you look at the hospital, probably realistically entails a new building.
And we just can't tell John that he needs to raise that money all by himself?
We own the building.
Yeah, we own that.
He's pointed that out to us.
With John, we can raise the funds.
Yeah.
They maintain the building, they have responsibility for the facilities, but we are...
We are the landlord.
We are the landlord.
And what, what is the deadline that we need to kind of get that up to snuff?
Yeah, John?
2030, yeah, I was gonna say 15 years, so...
Okay. Slowly but surely, I had that on my list.
And that's a huge...
Would, would you like John to speak on that briefly?
Do you want to just briefly, uh...
Sorry, John, you showed up, that's your fault.
But I'm happy to, it's important that, that everybody knows what's going on, John Frill, the CEO of the hospital, and I'll just be brief, um, you're correct, it's 2030, it's a state mandate that we have to replace it, it's not just because we're a rural hospital, there are a lot of hospitals throughout the state that are not meeting seismic compliance, and our facility was built in 1960 and added on to, I think, in 1980, so I'm always asked, what's it gonna cost, of course, none of us are willing to step out there, but a rough estimate these days, it's about tw- about a million dollars per bed, and we have a 12-bed hospital, so a good number, I think, is still 12 million dollars, that's full replacement, but I think we have to ask ourselves and go through a planning process, just like you're doing here, is what do we need in the future? Is it 12 beds, is it eight beds? More and more of healthcare deliveries going to the outpatient, um, component, which our, we have been experiencing as well, so we have a lot of soul-searching and internal thinking to do, and starting it off with a community needs assessment, which our board is working on doing right now, to get the input from our community, where do you get your healthcare, what healthcare do you need, what do you see happening in the future? So, when we get that done, we can do some strategic planning and come back with a recommendation, are we looking at a 12 million, or 15 million, or 6 million? As far as funding is concerned, the city does have responsibility, but we're also fortunate as a hospital that there are dollars available to us through low-interest rate loans, Ben and I have talked about USDA Rural, which specifically focuses on small rural hospitals like ourselves through the USDA with a small interest loan, so we need to look at all of that, so I don't think the city needs to think that all the dollars are coming from the city coffers, we do benefit, as you know, from a Measure M, which is a half a percent sales tax, which goes into perpetuity, so, we have to look at that as a particular source, certainly not wanting to advocate increasing taxes, but that is a tax, and so we can consider something along those lines, if that were to be the way we need to go in the future for financing. So, I'll stop there, 'cause I could go on for the whole night about the hospital thing, so, but I'm, I'm more than happy to answer any questions or to participate in any discussions the city chooses to have, and will certainly involve you as we deliberate at the hospital.
It's a million dollars for an acute bed, is that the same for SNF?
I'm sorry?
A million dollars per acute bed?
Pretty much, uh, when, it's, it's, we're, I use "per bed" because it's a general term on how to calculate it, but it's really for the entire infrastructure, including the, uh, the program planning, uh, the cost of financing, so trying to give people a good number, it comes out to about a million dollars per bed.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, boy, so I think we're, Councilmember Hernandez, I believe it's your turn again?
Okay. Um, when I ran a couple of years ago, I also, and part of my thing was really work on trying to get a rec building for the city, now, it's been two years already, I don't know how hard we're really trying to get it, I don't know if we've really talked about it, I mean, with, with the people that, that have the property, or whatever the case may be, but prior to me even being here, 14 years down the line, everybody else was talking about a rec center for the kids, and again, I think it's very important, I think we need to try to get one, but I would like to see us, at some time or point, really make an effort into bringing it back up again, and it seems like we kind of dropped the ball somewhere, every year, um, to me, I'd like to see that, I was hoping to have it done by my four-year term, well, we're halfway through that, and there's still nothing, and somewhere along the line, I'd like to see it brought up, at least talked about, kicked around, plans or something, it doesn't seem to be anywhere near what we need to have going on for the kids.
Well, and I'm glad that you've mentioned this, 'cause this is a great example of, you know, this, this is a goal, and then when we get, um, next couple meetings to our prioritization, this will tell us our marching order, so to speak, and that, that will be how we'll address it, how important it is to you guys will be how your staff will work to make it happen, so absolutely right, and you're gonna, well, you're gonna identify what the goals are, and then you're gonna tell us the order that you'd like us to tick 'em off, and that's, that'll be our, our direction.
Yep.
Anyone want to add to that discussion on the, the recreation building, or a community center, whatever you, you know, want to refer to it as, I have heard it called both things in discussions, so... Mayor?
Well, it's just the broader issue of land, and it would just be wonderful, and I've mentioned it to you briefly today, find out truly what the, the desires of, are, of landholders, including the Conservancy, and really work out a, hey, this is, once we have our prayers, this is truly what we want, this is truly what you want, and really try to hash out an agreement that says, okay, for the next five, 10 years, this is what we're all working on, and, and there has to be some buy-in on everything, buy-in and give and take, I mean, this is a wonderful little community that needs everybody to work together as a family, so, um, and including the utility companies as well, I mean, we all just have to really come down and say, you know, where are we going, where are we headed, you know, it's, it's, um...
So, so perhaps a suggestion, a clarification of that goal might be identifying the stakeholders and, and working towards a covenant, so that it becomes a reality.
Yeah, more than just, I wanted this and you wanted that, it has to be...
A covenant.
The covenant, that's a great word.
Sure, I would, I would just add that one opportunity that this council will have, 'cause we are in the beginning of negotiations with the island company on a development agreement that covers a broad piece of property, um, and one of the, the concepts is a recreational center, we anticipate that during this, the next two years, hopefully, if anything goes right, we will have a signed development agreement with the company and perhaps other stakeholders, or at least a, a, a good draft, but we already have an agreement with them where we're, they are reimbursing the city for the cost of developing this overall, um, development, and it's our goal, and I believe their goal is too, to have a master agreement in two years, ho- hopefully sooner, so, we understand this goal, and this, we're, we're working on this, and this may help us accelerate those discussions.
Okay, great.
Okay, very good, anything additional on that goal?
Good.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Cassidy?
Um, how about a comprehensive transportation review, to include vehicles, roads, permits? That's an easy one for Jordan to write down.
He, he's salivating now.
I know.
Could, could you, again, get the components of that one more time?
Uh, to include vehicles, roads, permits, and I'm sure there's more.
And I'm not, why am I not clear what you're saying?
Um, having a, a comprehensive transportation review of the city, um, the number of permits we have, uh, the types of permits we have, when they're used, when they're allocated, how long they're allocated for, um, our roads in general, um, what our plan is with the roads, uh, can we maybe look at a more walkable community, and how can we make it a more walkable community, um, how can we make it safer to be a walkable community, um, and then types of vehicles, uh, more sustainable vehicles, is what we have, um, does it actually work for... Does it actually work for us right now, having just gone through a vehicle hearing? Something that, that I didn't know is that the overall wheelbase of a vehicle in general, the standards are much longer, larger than they've ever been before. So in order to purchase a vehicle, in some cases, you have to buy an older vehicle that fits within. So just an overall comprehensive review on where, what we want to see, transportation-wise.
So I also heard topics relating to congestion and mobility, I think, as part of what you were saying, is that, is that fair?
That, and, and permits.
And permits.
What we have, how they're, the process of the permits, how they're allocated, how long they're allocated for, who they're allocated to, why?
There's, I see three things that you brought up, you've got the vehicle side of it, you've got the pedestrian, the walkability of the community, and you've got the roads and stuff like that. I, one of my little things was the vehicle thing, I mean, the ordinance is over 35 years old, and we've tweaked it a little bit, but we've never gone back and actually reviewed it, and why is it here now? I would, I would like to make that a specific goal that we get done in the next two years, is that we review the existing vehicle ordinance, and we recommend whatever modifications are required. I mean, personally, 1,600 golf carts, to me, seems like a whole bunch of golf carts. And I know that when the original ordinance came in, we didn't talk about golf carts, because Yamahas weren't around, and they're electric golf carts, and it wasn't an issue. In 81, when Yamaha showed up, the Yamaha that the company gave my grandfather when we retired is still on the island. Yeah, and that's kind of scary. So I think, you know, you, you walk around downtown, you're just parking, and it's not traffic as much as it's finding a place to park once you get down there.
And with all that vehicle things too, it's maybe something like looking at some kind of an attrition rate by the year so-and-so, or either all-electric, or some other alternative vehicle?
So I think, yeah, so I heard something specifically about revisiting the vehicle ordinance?
Right.
And, and the components therein, and is, would that be part of the revisiting of the ordinance, or is that establishing a moratorium, or...
That would be more along the line of a moratorium, yes, considering something like that.
Would, would, okay, so would, would that be something we want to consider as a separate goal, or would that be part of, part of one of these goals?
I don't know, you can tell us that.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, they're kind of different.
Yeah, they're, they're, the, the one scary thing is when the original ordinance was enacted, it was a regular ordinance, so 45 days after it was enacted, it became law.
Yes.
And we went from 800 to 1,100 cars in that 45-day period.
Yeah.
If we're thinking about some sort of moratorium, we need to put it on the next agenda, and we need to put it as an urgency ordinance, so that we don't get inundated with another 1,600 golf carts.
Well, moratorium and, or, and the, the type of vehicles that we allow in the future, in, in an effort to...
What, what would you recommend, Mr. City Attorney, as a good way to parse that, so it doesn't get too unwieldy?
What a moratorium does is allows you to take a pause and stop the issuance of any more permits for golf carts, vehicles, or, or whatever. You can enact that by four-fifths vote at a regular meeting of the city council.
Properly noticed.
Properly noticed, that's brown act notice. So you could do that, that, that is an option, that would, then you, you'll, then you are required, if you do enact, to study during, as, study as promptly as you can, what you want to do with your vehicles. And then the question is, as a policy matter, if you enact that moratorium, what you're really saying is, no one can come in and get a golf cart or other vehicle permit until we're, until we're finished.
So we better have our goals what we're trying to...
Well, and, but, but I, I believe that Councilman Olson is correct in that if you're thinking about a moratorium, then you may get a rush. I had an experience in Lake Arrowhead where they put a moratorium on new building permits, and we got, you know, 130 of them, like, within a couple of months, and everyone just flooded, oh my gosh, I'm not gonna be able to build a home, so they all came in. So, again, it's, it's, if, if you want, we can look at it legally.
Or deadly tomorrow, everybody's gonna be calling M and S, or there's gonna be a moratorium.
I just wanted a review.
Well, again, this is just brainstorming, so let's, let's be very clear, this is brainstorming, so we just, this is a healthy discussion.
You guys were staring at me.
Nothing's happening after this meeting, okay, this is, and, and we are, remember, we are gonna be capturing all this and distributing it to all you to go back and look at. There are gonna be some things that we talked about that you might decide that you don't like later tonight, or tomorrow. That's fine, you know, so, okay. So I think we're back to Councilmember Sampson?
Community garden.
Okay.
Let's get that going again. We have a lot right back here, behind the city hall, which Annie Marshall mentioned, and it is perfect for that, you could put four plots on there, back there, sell them for a hun, rent them for $100 each. Of course, we gotta set up some guidelines, make it really, like, really nice, but... Somebody sent me an email the other day where there, there's a city in England where every little plot of land within the city, I mean, this would be hard for us to do with the deer, was, was dedicated to vegetable gardens. And you could go out, every, I mean, everywhere, all the planters, people could put little vegetable gardens there, keep them up, and everybody had food. So you could go out every night, and you could pick a little lettuce, some blueberries, maybe a lemon if you needed it. But what we could do is start right there, it's a piece of cake, there's a few people, there's quite a few people in town that want to do this, we need an emergency food source as well, and it's good for nutrition, it's, nutritional value is, is way better than the food that you can buy in the store, homegrown food, and it's something that's realistic, and it's, it's right there, and we can make money on it, too.
There, there are a number of examples of, of, of great community gardens, even throughout Southern California. Certainly would be better than the gravel pit that we have behind, back there now. No disrespect to anybody who's made it to gravel pit, it's, it's tidied up, I just, but, you know, it's, it's underutilized, clearly.
Yeah.
And to your comment on the available food, I, I know that University of California Davis has areas that are public where they grow edible food, where it's encouraged for you to come by and grab some lettuce, or pick a tomato, or whatever, that's part of the reasons there. So certainly lots of ways to, to do that. Any, any questions about that particular goal, or clarification?
Might want to get a lease on that, for a piece of property.
Some, some, yeah, some communities do have specific agreements that they have, you know, and, and, you know, run it as a co-op, there, there are a number of ways that you can do that. Tenure, land tenure is obviously a, a concern with us here, but, yeah. Very good, Mayor Protem Olson? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, are we still talking about the community garden, okay?
Along with balanced budgets, it'd be nice to have our enterprise funds be both balanced and also have adequate reserve funds behind them, so that when things like pump failures come up, we have a backup resource that we can do to fix that sucker.
I know the fire department would certainly be in favor of that. Okay, so two separate goals, or one goal?
I believe you can use the enterprise funds being balanced as part of the first original goal about the balanced budget, but I think the, the reserve funds...
Establishing reserve funds.
Establishing reserve, reasonable reserve funds.
Okay. Very good.
What's reasonable?
That's what we gotta figure out.
What, I was...
One of, one of the questions we had earlier was, how much are we paying every year in fix-it maintenance, for like, the sewer and the salt? And once we get a handle on what our historical spending's been, then that's what should allow to arrive at a reasonable number that you want to put in the bank, because you're spending that every year, and it takes a couple of years to build that up. It's like, we have no reserves for the MRF, even though we own the MRF, and we've gotta spend some money on the MRF this year, that's gonna like, come from someplace, but it's, it's... The harbor has replacement funds, the, we have a vehicle replacement fund, the sewer has a replacement fund, Salt has, I think, a replacement fund?
Anemic, but yes.
Yeah, anemic, but yes, I mean, there's nothing for the MRF.
Right.
The materials facilities, the dump. Whatever that stands for?
Never heard of it, okay.
MRF, it's a fancy name for it.
So at any given time, something within the city can go wrong or break, and we have to replace it, and we have to have the money there to replace it? Let's say a pump, a vehicle, something that the fire department needs, something that the harbor department needs, all the above?
I think, I think the fire department and the harbor are covered by the vehicle replacement fund.
Okay.
But I don't think that we have enough money, enough thoughtful money for the enterprise funds.
I, I, I would say that in, in Lake Arrowhead, we just went through a, a process, and I don't know the exact figures, but there are recommendations for reserve funds for the different type of systems that you have, water, wastewater, that there are these general guidelines for municipal entities, so we can incorporate that into this.
Any additional questions on this particular goal?
Very good.
Okay.
Very good, Ole, Councilman.
Okay.
Does the landfill fall under the, all the infrastructure things we talked about?
We didn't specifically carve the landfill out, and we may want to, to do that, because it's got some unique requirements, and, and some, some unique challenges, because it's, it's a finite amount of space.
Right, and so looking at alternatives for that landfill, and...
Or also, and not to put words in your mouth, but, yeah, right, waste energy applica, there's a...
Right, technologies and things, ways to use that.
Advanced technology that could help us in that area.
Excellent, okay.
And so if you, I, I would suggest to the council that maybe that might be considered as a separate goal.
Okay, perfect.
Pursuing advanced technology as it relates to the landfill and its capacity, particularly in the area of, of energy.
Right.
A lot has changed in the last five years, where things that were pie in the sky are no longer pie in the sky.
And this is piggybacking in a different way, so I'm getting maybe two, two for one, but you can tell me to be quiet and move on. One of the things we discussed was advisory groups, to deal with a lot of the issues that are priorities, that turn out to be our priorities, and I would like that to be established, because we do have a lot of wise and well-connected people in town, because we do, I know we have, we have such a limited staff, and the Jordans of the world, and the fire departments of the world can't, you know, and we don't have money to go out and do research and development projects every time we turn around, so that would be the whole thing about create, once we get our priorities, creating advisory committees where we feel they would be helpful.
Okay, sure. I might suggest that as a, as a parking lot item, just to help us facilitate our, our goals, if that's okay with you.
Right, right, okay.
Okay. Councilmember Hernandez?
Well, I would come back, I guess this would be coming out of the infrastructure, but the sewer plant, do you ever get updates from their management on exactly what they have on board? Do, you know, with how, the condition of it and all that stuff? You get monthly meetings and stuff like that?
Could I speak on that really quick?
Absolutely.
Richard, in my outer office area, I have a really thick binder, I get weekly reports, I get monthly reports, I get annual reports, they're very detailed, I'd love to share them with you.
Great, yeah, I didn't know that.
I'm in constant communication with David Clary.
But, yeah, okay, that, that would be one of my questions, 'cause I'd like to, 'cause I know that's at the, during the summer months, when we get a lot of people, it's right at the verge of overflowing, and this and that, and that, that definitely concerns me, but...
Sure, and perhaps as a suggestion I could take on, including in the weekly update, something about the sewer plant as an ongoing thing, with, with any information that comes in that...
Are they clear, do they, what stuff they have to back up? I mean, backup stuff that they need?
Like backup equipment and stuff?
Yeah, backup, like valves break, or this and that, do they have, is that listed in there?
They have slowly been trying to add certain things.
Is that also...
The problem with our infrastructure is that there's different joints and valves, and every time one breaks, it's usually one we don't have.
Correct.
Yeah, but they're working on it, Richard.
Okay, but that's also included in the report, so?
Uh, no, more maintenance and, no, that's not in the reports, but we could find that out, we can get updated on that.
Okay. Kind of an important thing to might have.
Okay.
I'm ready to hear from the people.
Well, that's an interesting point that you bring up, it, it's 15 minutes until 8 o'clock, and 8 o'clock is the two-hour time mark, and I was committed that we go no longer than two hours just to avoid fatigue and to keep the energy level high. I mean, you may want to consider at this point, because I think as a body, I'm getting from you that you're committed to having more than one meeting on this topic, it seems like this has been a good process. You may want to consider opening up to the, the community to comment, or if you wanted to go through a few more goals, it's your call, but just as a reminder.
I, I, I think that's a good idea, but we do have, Councilman Cassidy has one more goal to equal, four for each.
I didn't realize we were keeping score, but okay.
I'm, I'm keeping...
Have you met Scott?
Apparently not.
You better have one, man.
I do, now you put me on the spot. Whatever the amount is, and whatever the timeframe is, if we have money available for low-to-moderate income housing, to have a plan within the two-year period to spend that money, or have already started spending that money before we lose it.
Boy, do we have money.
Right. Okay, did you get that, Jordan?
Bring it back, Jordan.
Okay, so again, it is 7:46, would you, would you like to, at this point, open it up to the public for, for comment, and to tell Bernie, if he's listening, he can come running down here to say something?
Sure. Okay, so, but at some point, we can still add more things, correct?
Yes, so, so just, just as a, a rehash, we're, we're going to document everything that you discussed tonight, get it out to you.
Right.
We're gonna, I think that we probably need to schedule another brainstorming meeting, maybe we at that point exhaust the ideas, and then we start getting into prioritization.
Perfect, okay.
And it, it mutually determined, it won't, it won't be next week, it would have to be one of the weeks after next week.
Okay, perfect. Okay, would anybody from the audience like to come up and share? Come on, John.
They're sitting there so patient.
I know.
John, Council, 352 Catalina, congratulations, new mayor and councilpeople, on your victories, and hopefully we'll get underway with, working on some things that you've been discussing already tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank each one of you for opening this forum up for the general public, because that's something that probably is overdue. There's opportunities to come to council and speak your mind, but for whatever reason, I see a lot of either apathy, or, or something that takes place where people just don't engage themselves in, in these meetings, and even tonight, I mean, we've got some of the seedy leadership in town, but, I mean, it should be a full chamber, in my opinion, and I don't know why we don't get that, but it's just really a matter of involvement. A lot of the things that you've been talking about tonight are, are issues that, that some of the general population in town, myself, have been talking about for quite some time. I think that one of the key things I'd, I'd like to, to present, and it's something that all of us should think about, is that Catalina Island, and Avalon in particular, when people come here, I mean, our entire existence is really reliant, of course, and everybody knows this, I'm, I'm stating the obvious, but everyone that lives here is reliant on the tourist trade that comes to town, regardless of whatever your business is. You know, without the tourist base here, somebody's not earning a living, and then they're not going to somebody else that doesn't rely on tourists to, to support their business. So everyone here is, is relying on it. And so what is Catalina Island, or, or Avalon in particular, I mean, what do we offer? And, and what is the product? And the, the product that this island and town provide is the experience. Whatever that experience happens to be, you come here and you have a great time because you do X, Y, Z, whether it's zip lining, or parasailing, or whatever it happens to be, that experience is, is the thing that keeps this ball rolling. And anything that detracts from that experience, regardless of what it is, if it's bad bathrooms that aren't maintained, or the mold that's, that's coming apart, that has infrastructure issues, or whatever it happens to be, anything that detracts from that overall experience is really a threat to our livelihood in general. And I think that we, we kind of need to start from that platform and say, what do we need to do collectively everywhere to make sure that the experience for people that come here is as good as it can possibly be that we can make it? And I think that's a, a good place for us to start. There's a multitude of things that I could go into, but we have run a little long, and I want other people to have an opportunity to come here and talk as well. But I, I think that this is a great place to start, I think that encouraging more of these types of meetings is, is certainly in, in order, and, and getting some of the think-tank programs going with some people. There's some great people in this town that have good ideas. And to tap into those ideas, I think, is probably the smartest thing that we can do, so we don't have to necessarily be spending or outsourcing a lot of our funds to bring in, you know, consultants and things, because I think we have a lot of consultants right here in town, that have a, a personal vested interest in the betterment of this place, and, and it's, and its well-being. And I think that they have a, they have a much stronger...
Thank you for that opinion, that's great.
Hey, John, John, I think you're one of those great people with great ideas and you have a great reputation and you do a lot of good things for this community, would you happen to be able to give us a couple of examples of things that you would just think of off the top of your head that we might be able to improve? Just a couple of things right off the...
Okay, well, one thing right off the top, and it's something I addressed just recently, you know, we get in situations where we have potential litigation issues against the city all the time, and if you start taking funds and diverting them to someone that's got a claim against the city, and that's the same money that we could be using to fix something else or do something, you know, citywide, and we're instead spending those funds in an area that we shouldn't have to.
Yes, sir.
And about a month ago, I mean, I was just walking my dog and someone saw a person walking down the stairway at Lever's Cove, and the railing was completely broken, I mean, they grabbed the railing and it moved about 18 inches.
Yes, sir.
And that person almost fell down the stairs and went, there's a lawsuit right there, and the city would have absolutely zero grounds to stand on. And so I reported it right on the spot, I just made a call and said, man, somebody needs to get over here and fix this thing, and finally, you know, just the other day, it was repaired. But I think that there's a multitude of things in town...
Yes, sir.
...that are public sort of potential litigant situations, where we've got something that's not fixed or maintained and somebody could injure themselves. We should just go around and, you know, sort of flag those items and say, look, I mean, there's a potential lawsuit, there's a potential lawsuit, and maybe it doesn't cost a lot of money to fix, but if it doesn't get fixed and someone injures themselves, we're on the hook for it.
Thank you so much, that is really great, that's great input, I really appreciate you coming up and saying that. Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Kevin?
Kevin Striggi, 129 Olive, congratulations, everybody. Couple of things, just real quick, I won't expound upon them real deep, but one thing, backing up to the water, phase-two water rationing, this is, I think, a high priority and not something that we can look a year, two years down the road. I am trying to figure out right now what the consequences of phase-two water rationing is, because guess what, if the hotels or the vacation rentals, we have to cut our business 25% or whatever it's going to take to comply, your budget's going to go down that same amount, and we're talking July and August here, you know, that's big. So I think a priority should be to try and figure out exactly where we're at and what is it going to take, so, anyway, the consequences are not good, so. Another thing in infrastructure, I don't know if anybody, I've done a lot of research on this, you know, our community is growing and technology is a big part of our business, we are really weak in the whole communications area as far as getting internet and telephone and all of that over here. We run through a microwave system, microwave is going out the door these days, and really it's getting to the point of something like a fiber optics cable or something coming from over town is going to be a necessity, but it is not a necessity that 1,600 household owners in town can pay for, so government's going to have to step in somehow and help with this as well, I think, so that's another deal.
If I could, Kevin, just interject on that really quickly, sorry, I don't mean to derail you, but I just want the council to know, and you and the community, that both Verizon and AT&amp;T have recently approached me, last couple of months, and they're both very committed to creating temporary measures to increase our capacity with the eye being on the traffic this summer. And I've met with both of them, they're looking at leasing additional space from the city and also from the island company to help them accomplish that. The longer-term vision is we're going to have to craft some telecommunication ordinances to regulate this, because the long-term fixes to allow for the type of capacity that we need are probably beyond what you're thinking, and they're a little astonishing, but they're large towers, and unfortunately, the technology is line of sight, so this is something that we have to think about. The temporary measures thankfully are not going to be that obtrusive, but the long-term current technology that they've spoken to me about is, hey, you know, this is pretty simple how it works, you got to be up in the air and you got to be somewhere where you can see it from this location, because that's how the technology works, so...
Yeah, and even beyond that, you know, it's getting that the Verizons, in fact, I've had some conversations with them as well, they're trying to get away from microwave, you know, because microwave is not the, you know, safe thing to be doing, they're claiming, so, anyway, they're all trying to get away from that, so we're going to have to get to a different means of doing this, I think, in the end, and that's where it's going to be a major project, I think, but boy, there has to be funds and services available, you know, they're trying to do this with rural America throughout America, so...
Well, the good news so far is that these measures, at least the temporary ones through Verizon and AT&amp;T, are at their nickel.
Yep, yep, yep. The last thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, and I've watched what's gone on in this town for a number of years here, you know, and as being a businessman, you can sit down and you say, how can we ever afford to fix this with 1,600 residences in town, you know, I don't care if it's the sewer plant or more water or whatever, and Annie, I was glad to hear you say that, you know what, it's going to take sitting down with the stakeholders and try and create win-win situations, you know, it's time for that. It's, you know what, we're going to have to, citizens or councilpeople, we're going to have to give up some, and the stakeholders will have to give up some, but boy, I'll tell you what it is, time that we move the ball forward, and in order to do that, it's going to have to be a win-win situation, so you're going to have to approach it in a little different light than maybe we have in the past, so, Annie, I was glad to hear you say that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anyone else have anything to say?
Lisa Lavelle, 239 Descanso, I just wanted to ask, since the previous council had already signed a resolution in agreement with the idea of utilizing less single-use plastic bags, if the plastic bag ban would be a resolution that you would be moving towards hopefully in the next two years and/or sooner? And of course, with litigation from California, that probably will happen as well, but I don't know if it's something where we can actually be proactive about it.
We need to bring that, I'm glad you brought that up, we need to bring that item back to the council. Basically, there was some state law that might have preempted our attempt, and I don't know, Scott, if you know exactly where that stands at this point.
No, I know Amy has a memo that she's drafting in conjunction with our planning department to bring a plastic bag study session to the council, so that is upcoming, probably within the next three meetings.
Are we finding out, because I think all of us here are supporting that ban?
Right.
But are we finding out what's happened, because we understand there's the lawsuits that go on, does it look like they're kind of getting tired of that because people are...
Right, two things. All the lawsuits so far that have been filed by the plastic ban, by the Plastic Bag Association, they've lost. They just keep losing them, but they're still filing them because it's expensive for the city if you get sued. So what the grocers have done, or the people that are in favor of the ban, is they've gone to the state of California to enact legislation that would just say that cities, you're out of this now, we're going to put a statewide ban on plastic vans, and so to take away the local authority to enact bans, and it would be a statewide authority. And so that legislation is being worked on, it's going through the process, and if that were to pass, then any ban that you would put on would be irrelevant.
So they're going to fight the fight?
That's the thought in the state, that they will do this, looking at the lawsuits that have so far been challenged and have been successful, and any ordinance that we would do, as well as the environmental reports in support of the ordinance, would be based upon ordinances and reports that have already withstood challenge from the Plastic Ban Association.
So that doesn't mean that we couldn't work closely with the schools and get choices and people like that to sell those bags, get those other bags out there, we just kind of do our own little thing, right? I mean, a lot of people are already using them, but just keeping that going on a grassroots level?
Absolutely.
The city has adopted a resolution encouraging the use of, encouraging the elimination of plastic bags on a voluntary basis, and then again, we'll come back to you with the status of that state legislation and a discussion for whether you want to do it yourself or wait to see what the state is going to do.
Yeah, that resolution was not read into the minutes that day, so it would have been nice, maybe if it could come back to be read, and I don't know, maybe we make a big deal at the, you know, in the auditorium at the school and read the resolution to the students if they have a...
And I know Avalon Beautiful is interested in assisting with those types of things through our program as well, so...
Is this something that's mainly a problem with the grocery bags, would you say, or just are we talking about...
Just from personal knowledge, I think you have it throughout the stores, it's an expensive bag use for stores to purchase, it tends to be cheaper than paper, which is probably why it's so proliferating, but...
We have plastic bags, and I know there would probably be less of a problem with plastic bags from the little gift stores and from the clothing stores, but a lot of the neater bags that you get in town are some of the ones that you get from shopping downtown, and I don't think those are the ones we find on the streets and in the ocean, those are the ones that people take home with us, with them, correct? Would you say?
Yeah, I'm just, I think we're worried more than anything about the amount of plastic that's being added to the landfill that won't necessarily be able to break down, that causes an issue with that area of town more than anything else.
So in general, this would encompass everyone, every business in Avalon is what we need to kind of push for eventually?
Again, that's what the state's looking at, because some cities, like Santa Monica, you don't have any plastic bags, like if you go to a bookstore, you know, they'll give you a paper bag that you pay 10 cents for, or you don't get a bag, period. Other cities just say it just only applies to grocery stores, because that's where the greatest volume of business is, and so plastic bags are okay when you go to the hardware store or the bookstore, but not in the grocery store. So again, the state's going to set the rules, and you could always, for instance, if the state just said, just going to be grocery store bags, you could, if you wanted to, go beyond that and ban all plastic bags, you know, you can always go, you can always regulate farther than the state, okay? Unless the state says that you can't, unless the state adopts specific language in their statute that says that this is the end-all, to be all, and you can't do anything beyond this, so that's why we have to wait to see what the state does.
The other question I have is with regards specifically to the sewer items that Denise brought up, it seems like we are always playing catch-up in town, and so I'm wondering if you can make an overreaching goal of yours, which is very, very broad and probably has no time limit, to be, to become more of a proactive city than a reactive city, so in terms of sewers, perhaps it means we start looking at ways to standardize different parts of the town. I know that many things we work with are old and we Catalina patch them, and that's how everything gets fixed, but I think it's time that we stop being reactive and start being proactive, and if, I know, I think all of you probably agree with that, but I think that if there's a strategic categorical way to do that, I think that would be fantastic. So maybe when you're looking at each item, we have an answer for now, is this going to work for five or 10 years, is it going to work for 20 years, is it going to work for 30 years? If it's not going to work for 30, maybe we should find one that will work for 30 years, so that we get a calendar set up of when things need to be proactively taken care of instead of reactively treated.
And hopefully that's the end-all of this whole process that we want to be going through. I mean, I hope it's going to be, I think we all hope that's going to be helpful.
That's a big thing, yeah, absolutely, Lisa. Thank you for your input. I had a little tour with Dave Cleary out at the sewer plant, by the way, and it was really interesting to go out there and see how things run out there, and he was very open about things and letting me know exactly what he thought about the process which the sewer plant has to go through to, you know, to process our waste, and I don't know, I would highly suggest to anybody, if it's in the best interest of our community, to actually see what those gentlemen do out there and see how hard they work and what their job is, and it's very organized, and he gave me a lot of input as to where we were, where we are at, and where we actually, we need to go into the future, and what he needs out there, he let me know what he's going to need out there at the sewer plant, as well as what Front Street's going to need, when the different development projects come into place and everything goes down. Basically, we've, I think we've limited to this point, to Front Street, and there's a big line that goes from Front Street out to the sewer plant. I'm sure the processing of the sewer plant right now, I think he said it was operating at almost capacity midsummer, busiest time of the year, but the big breach is down on Front Street, that big line that goes straight through Front Street, and that's the last thing, I guess, we're going to have to deal with to this point, because the slip lining's all been done, for the most part, so, it's an interesting thing to go out and walk, and I suggest that maybe the other councilpeople, councilmembers go out and talk to Dave Cleary out there, and he'll give you some input on what we need to do. It's a nice little tour to take.
Been there, done that.
Been there.
Been there, done that.
Anyone else have anything they would like to mention? Irene?
My name's Irene Strobel, 330 Clemente, I just would like to congratulate this great group we've got up here. I think you're on the street, I think people will be able to talk to you, and that is the main thing, get out there, let people tell you what's going on in their areas and maybe you can help. It's wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, Irene.
Thanks, Irene.
And you know that Irene Strobel was once mayor of the city of Avalon.
You know. Do you want to go through any council reports, or do you want to...
Well, looks like next, so we will, anybody else before we move on? Wayne?
Don't invite Wayne up.
That's the CEO.
Okay, all right, well, do we have a city manager report?
I do, just briefly, wanted to call to your attention, as you probably know that the DMV was out here, and they unfortunately suffered a technical glitch, both here with their gear and also at their main office, and so the local government's a very small world, so they sent down their deputy director, who's a guy named Mike McGowan, who happens to be the former mayor of the first city I ever worked in, West Sacramento, so I haven't seen him in 20 some odd years, but anyway, the bottom line is, he is committed to trying to make this right, and so I'm going to be sending him a letter, he thought it would be helpful, from the city to the DMV, to express our appreciation for their trying to make it work, but we need them to come back if it's possible to process those people that were unable to get assistance while they're here due to the technical issue, and he was very apologetic, but they worked till 11 o'clock last night trying to make things right, and so they were trying, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't certainly without some effort, so we'll be doing that. The other thing is, he wanted to make us aware that there's AB-60 which allows for, it allows for those, wrong term to use, non-citizens to obtain identification, I guess is the only way I know how to really say that, that's state law basically, so if you don't, if you're not a citizen, but you have documentation, you will be able to get an identification card. And he recognized that there's probably a good portion of our population here on the island that might benefit from that state law and that service from the DMV, and so he just wanted to let us know that it might be helpful for us to also advise the DMV that if they wanted to begin some type of outreach in that area, it could be beneficial to the residents of Catalina. So that's all I have.
Is there the attorney?
Yeah, one of the requirements of being councilpeople, as well as being a department head...
And so he just wanted to let us know that it might be helpful for us to also advise the DMV that if they wanted to begin some type of outreach in that area, it could be beneficial to the residents of Catalina. So that's all I have.
City Attorney?
Yeah, one of the requirements of being council people, as well as being department heads, is every two years, you have to have ethics training and you have to complete it this year. Yeah, I know.
We've just did it.
And so there are several ways to do it. You can go online, and I have materials for you to go online. That's just, you just sit there and you listen to the computer talk. Another way, which we've done in Avalon traditionally, is I will put it on and then there's some interaction there. This year, I have an associate from my office who does the training. And he hasn't been to Avalon in a while, so what he's, what we're going to do is we're going to try and get dates from the council members and everyone. He's going to come as part of his, like, vacation day. He's going to carve out two hours, not charge the city. He just wants to come to Avalon and he's going to do the training. So Denise will be sending out an email, probably going to do it in the next month or two. It'll be a joint meeting with the city council, planning commission, and then all the department heads. And that way, we can get your training. Obviously, I like to do it as quickly as possible rather than wait till the end of the year. And obviously, any training is good because it helps you better serve the community if you know what the rules are as to what you're supposed to do and what you're not supposed to do.
And that's open to the public, too.
It is open to the public, yeah.
So we could encourage the public to come as well. Okay.
It's a public, it's a public meeting. So it'll be advertised on the website and people can come.
It's been two years already.
It's been two, yeah, I know. I know.
Council members?
I just, I'm sorry. I'm just going to digress for a brief second. And Jordan, can I add one more thing to the list, please?
No, no, you've already had your four.
Please, please.
There's more here, too.
I know.
Well, if I could, we are, we are going to have additional session.
And then I just wanted to point out that we, and I realize we're staying on time, but we, we didn't actually answer the second question that you had us do our homework on, which was reflection after two years. So I want to make sure we don't lose that because I think it's very important for us to discuss what we want people to think of us in two years.
Or the community or.
Or the community.
Rich, do you have something?
I'm good, thank you.
I do.
Good, all right.
This was, even though it was a fairly boring PowerPoint, this is fairly informative. But do you think we could expand on some of the responsibilities of being a member of this goss body is because of what do you have to do in post-session and, you know, just? There's a lot of stuff that we got to learn and that it would be easier to have a concise document that we can all look at and answer, a go-to source.
A policy manual, perhaps, or something like that?
We have, I can take a board policy manual and customize it for Avalon, which basically goes over meetings, obligations, ethical obligations, how you conduct a meeting, decorum among, interaction between yourselves, decorum with interaction with staff. And we could put that all together. And then we could either present that to you all at once or we could take off little bites and have chapter-by-chapter discussions, whatever your desire is. I can follow that.
I think it's a great idea. So we'll follow the idea and then we'll figure out how we're going to chew it.
Okay.
Okay.
Should we, just sorry to interject, looking at, if that's a direction to bring back at the May 6 meeting, we could, we could do that if that's.
Okay, perfect.
I know that was one of the things that I asked for the day after we were sworn in was whether or not we had a policies or procedures manual for us, especially as newly elected officials, that gave us guidelines of what we could and couldn't do and who we could talk to, how we could talk to them, what discussions we could have. And I mean, it falls identically to the same guidelines as an employee manual that any employee would receive at a new company, which just gives you a place to go to answer your own question and to make you think about how you're going to go about your business. And, and so I think it's a great value.
So perhaps as a starting point, we can bring back the concept to the May 6 meeting and maybe a couple salient first chapters to start the process so that we don't overwhelm everybody with material.
That sounds fine.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Do you have anything, Joe?
No, I concur.
I know, but did you have anything to report on?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Thank you. Uh-huh. Just because Jen, oh, Jen is here. I'm sorry, you were so quiet, Ed. City swap meet this Saturday, Peoples Park, 9 o'clock, 9 to 1 or till closing? 9 to 2 or till everything is gone. Excellent. All righty. Hope to see you out there. We have a lot of Catalina treasures. Also, Health Fest, for those, I think they announced it last time, but, but May 20th is the Health Fest, which will be held, the old Health Fair, now 30 years old, will be held on the, on Crescent Avenue. They're also looking for volunteers and they provide a little bit of training. So I think they go to Dawn for the volunteer training. Is that who they'd sign up with, Jen? Okay, perfect, perfect. Also, the 22nd.
Yes.
Thank you. It's a Thursday. Okay, thank you. No, it's a Thursday. Okay. Also, I wanted to announce that I'm going to be keeping office hours at City Hall in that whole effort to allow people to communicate and have easy access because I'm not walking down the streets all hours of the day and night. But I will be at City Hall on Mondays from 12:30 to 1:30 and Thursdays from 4:00 to 5:30 in an effort to try to get that lunch crowd versus that maybe getting off of work. And if you get here at 5:30, I need to stay a little bit later. That's not a problem because I now have a key to the city, as do we all. So, and I don't know, that opportunity to have office hours is available to all of you. I know some of you have regular jobs and that might be kind of tough. But I do know that we all are very accessible. We're, we're working on our, I don't know if it was just me that had problems, but our city emails, is, am I the only one that's not hooked up, kind of? Or did Pat have trouble?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Did you, your city of Jay Sampson?
Yeah, I don't have that yet. I don't have it online yet.
Okay, okay. I know all these years worked.
I missed the, I missed the M date.
Okay, because I'm, well, I'm having a little glitch, but as you know, in the meantime, you can call City Hall and get in touch with Denise. And she will let me know if there's anything that's going on or if you want to make an appointment. So as you also know, I'm not on the email every day, every minute of the day. So there are phone numbers that will be there, so you're more than welcome to call me on my cellphone or through City Hall to reach me. And I'm sure everyone else is just as accessible. So look forward to getting your input. Is there anything else?
Annie, I have one thing. I hope it's appropriate for me to share this. I have a friend in Avalon. He is a mentor for a lot of the teenagers and kids. And he was relying on some funds. His name is Mike Forcella. He's a coach for the football team and a mentor. And a lot of his funds have depleted. And he takes kids in the interior. He takes them out in the hills. He runs with them. He talks with them. He prays with them. He counsels them. And he's run out of funds. So if anybody's interested in, and he just needs money, and that's it. So I'm here to tell you, he's a great guy. He does wonders for our community. He takes those kids that would otherwise be doing other things that we've talked about in the future that aren't good, I mean, in the past that aren't good, and he helps them, send them in the right direction. So if anybody's interested, you can get in touch with Mike Forcella through either church in town. That would be Singing Waters or the Community Church. Or I would be happy to give you his phone number. Anyway, that's my announcement, if that's okay. Done deal.
Yes.
Okay. Well, no further business. Meeting is adjourned.